I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land on which we're gathered and pay my respects to elders past, present, and emerging. Welcome to the City Infrastructure Committee meeting of 18 May. I declare the meeting open at 11:31 a.m. I'd like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being audio recorded but not being webcasted. At present, we have a leave of absence request for councillor Russell. Are there any other leave of absence requests coming through? I note that the mayor is not here for this meeting, so can I have someone move that councillor Russell and Mayor Darren Power be? Thank you very much. It's councillor Bradley moving, councillor Kerensky seconding. All those in favour? Thank you very much. You can put your hands down. It's carried unanimously. We've just got some L plates on, so we're going to go nice and slow today. I'll now refer to item 4.1. Can the Road and Infrastructure Planning Manager, Mr Kamau Ranawira, please enter the discussions? Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none. I note that Mr Ranawira is accompanied by Michael Abbott-Judd. Welcome, Michael, to the meeting this morning. Mr Ranawira, would you like to open the public discussion?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, councillors. This report is a minor nature road name change. In the past, if we did some changes to Basquiat Road, but this request came afterwards. So if you go to the page number, if you go to the attachment, it's easy for me to explain. It says in red, the previous road name changes, which is effective from 5th of April 2021, and the report was brought somewhere around January to this committee, and which was endorsed. But we didn't take notice of the Heinz Road that continues after the intersection. That part need to be considered as Menoura Road. That's the small change that we are going to do with this report. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll open the floor for councillors for discussion. Councillor Hall, you have a question?
Yeah, through the chair. Just let the other councillors know that as a divisional councillor, I'm supportive of this change. I believe it will save on a lot of confusion that may happen in the future because of this change, and I believe the residents would be agreeable that this would be the best outcome in terms of a change of name in that area.
Thank you very much. Do any other councillors have any other questions? Councillor Hall, would you like to move the report? Councillor Hall's moving it. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Kerensky, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr Ranawira, we'll move on to item 4.2 because that's yours as well. Before we open the discussion on these items, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? This is the bus shelter upgrade programme. There being none, Mr Ranawira, can you proceed, please?
Yes. Before I talk to the report, I'd like to thank all the councillors who provided information and support for this report, and it was easy for us to prioritise when we got that information in hand. Obviously, the report seeks councillors' endorsement for the prioritised schedule of bus shelters, installations, to be funded from the monies held in the constraints reserve for public transport purposes. In March, council requested to prepare a report for the bus shelter upgrade programme. That resolution is in the report as well. We selected 243 bus stops, bus shelters, bus stops, sorry, to be equipped with shelters. Those were selected based on councillor, based on requests from customers, as well as passenger boarding numbers, bus stops that are closer to aged care facilities and schools. So, in other words, vulnerable users. We have applied a weighted criteria based on those four items. The list, the prioritised list in the table is in the table one, so you can see about 243 bus shelters out of 780 bus stops that we have in council. I must also mention that we have proactively submitted 27 bus shelter requests to Translink in the past. That was based on their previous programme for Passenger Transport Accessible Infrastructure Programme. Under that, we have submitted 27 shelters as well. So those shelters are in the report as well. Shelter requests are in the report as well. In terms of funding, as said in our previous report, if Translink Bus Stop and Shelter Programme continues, council may only have to fund $6,000 per shelter on average. So which means we can deliver about 200 bus shelters out of the current funding that is in the reserve. We believe we can make a submission, full submission, as quickly as possible, but there's a lot of, there's some work has to be done. There's few constraints need to be highlighted here. We have not done a full site audit of these bus stops. We had to do that. All these assessments are done based on a desktop analysis. When site inspections are done, we may come across constraints. To the extent of certain places, it is not possible to install a bus shelter. It is the reality. For example, for road safety purposes or inadequate space. So that's the report. We are seeking endorsement for table one as the bus shelter upgrade programme.
Thanks very much for that. I'll open the floor for discussion with councillors. Councillor Hall, you had a question?
Yes, through the chair. Just a question. Has there been any consultation with some of our private transport service providers such as Clarks? Because I'm a bit worried that we'll approve some of these shelters, but some of those, you know, lines of travel might be discontinued by those private enterprises, and I'd hate to invest, you know, ratepayer money into something which may not be serviced correctly, or they may send traffic through somewhere else that may not have a shelter. Just on that.
Yeah. Translink actually has the responsibility to provide these services. So all those contracts will be under Translink. So when we make our submissions, Translink will go through that process and rationalise it.
Thanks. So essentially, Translink collate all of the private and public transport companies and then give you a list of the shelters along the route. So they should be serviceable current routes.
Correct. Translink will apply their criteria. We don't know what exactly the criteria is. At the moment, we provide our list, and then we submit our list, and they will apply those criteria. And if there is a route that is not going to be in the future, they will not provide bus shelters there.
Do you have any other questions, Councillor Hall?
Thank you. That's a good answer.
Thanks. Councillor Stemp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr Manui, just a question. In terms of prioritisation, it takes into account the number of users as well, so that's factored in. The question I ask that is that, how often is that reassessed? Because there's apparently a bus shelter going in my area, and I've had a couple of residents say to me that they don't believe that area is used that much by people anymore. But obviously, it's one going in now, so it would have been on a list from quite some time ago. So I guess I'm just curious to understand how often that sort of thing is reassessed, please?
I'll have to talk to Michael to answer that question.
Thank you. Yeah, so essentially, the patronised data from Translink is sourced annually. However, with COVID, they found that last year in particular, the dataset that they had was sort of impacted by that because of the sheer number of people not travelling for work. So the dataset that was used was from the previous year, 2019. So typically, it's based off of March data each year because that's the most, I suppose that shows the optimal pattern of number of people travelling in terms of, that's when universities start going back, everybody's at work, there's no school holidays, there's very limited public holidays in March. So essentially, you use March data. So the data from, that we're using is the March 2019 data, which is the most recent and current up-to-date.
Okay. So if it's on a list of prioritisation, but just before it actually gets on the ground, I guess, once it gets to that point, do you reassess at that point just to be confident that it is still used quite widely by the community?
Thanks very much. No other questions, Councillor Stemp? Councillor Walcox?
Thank you. I just need to bring your attention to a couple of errors that are on page nine of the report, page 15 of our packs. So on page nine, I just want to bring you down to number 12, the bus stop name for Caliuta Street. It's not in Eden's Landing, or Eden's Lanning as it's said. It's actually in Greenbank. So if you could just make that change. And just with the flagstone one, Homestead Drive near Gates Road, I have a bus stop on both sides of the road there. If I was to pick, I would put it on the opposite side of the road where the IGA is, or where the IGA used to be. I'd pop it over there, but it'd be great if I could have one on both sides of that road. Because the outbound is actually on the other side. It's 11 and 12.
We are referring to the bus shelters that we have already submitted.
Yep. I just need to make sure that I'm actually getting the right address.
Yeah, okay. We need to check the right address.
Thanks.
Nothing else, Councillor Walcox? Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, through the chair. I'm very grateful for this report and that it's been objectively assessed. I'm also very grateful to see Springwood Communities and I have had so many requests there for a bus shelter, so that's on page 15. Very happy to see that. And also outside Springwood High School. The other one I want to, Cinderella Drive, I've had a lot of requests, particularly people who are at R Care. So very grateful for that, too, and happy to move it when it's time. Thank you.
Can I ask a question first? Okay. Look, Mr Ranawira, just one thing. Number 21 on page 15 of the report has Lowell Street near Railway Parade at Trinder Park. I'm really grateful that this item has gone in there. I know that Division Two ratepayers are actually funding that bus shelter out of the local infrastructure programme money, but I'm glad that you've put it up for consideration through the state. That services a senior retirement village very close to it, so I appreciate that that's been included in there. And while we're on the subject of bus stops and your reviews, I've raised several bus stop issues with your RCM Programme Manager, Mr Bell, and he has reacted swiftly to those requests for review, particularly for disability accessibility. There are a number of older bus stops in my community that aren't disability compliant, and as we go around the community and we're researching those and people are raising them, council is moving swiftly to investigate them, and as funds become available, we will be adjusting those. So is there any plans to bring forward any funding or any programmes to actually look at those disability compliance of the actual, what are they called? The platforms? Just the actual slabs themselves?
As I mentioned, I think that the whole programme, PTAP programme, yeah, I can't remember the acronym. But we can consider that those disabled access requirements under that programme. So still, it is on. So it will be on till 2022, I believe. Yeah.
Great. I'm doing your investigating of Division Two for you, so I'll bring back all of them that I find. Director, you had something you wanted to add?
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion before us. Is anyone happy to move that motion? Councillor Bradley, seconded councillor Kerensky. All those in favour, please raise your hands. It's carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr Ranawira. That marks the end of the Road Infrastructure Planning Manager's report. Is there any general business you have for us?
Yeah. Like the bus shelter programme, I'm hoping to bring a list of bikeways projects because we are trying to put together the next SOI, or Statement of Intent for Cycle Network. So I'll probably need some feedback from all the councillors when I send that list to the councillors.
Given the number of rules you just got there, and I'd say that that will be very well received. Does anyone have any general business for the manager? Councillor Bradley?
Thank you. I was actually going to leave it for the 5.1, but I will say it now if that's okay, because it refers to Rochdale-Prestow Road intersection. And a couple of rounds ago, I asked to be kept informed about the meetings with Brisbane City Council. I haven't actually received an update. Is it possible to get an update where that's all at? My mobile offices, I'm forever getting constituents asking me. All I know is just the timeframes, that's all I know. So can I please get an update?
Mr Ranawira, do you have an answer for councillor Bradley?
Ever since that discussion, I had one meeting with them recently. I'm waiting for them to send some, I think what they said, agreed at that meeting is to send whatever the information they are going to provide their councillor to us as well. So I haven't received that information yet.
I respect that. However, I'm asking what you receive, what feedback you receive. That's what I'm asking.
In the last meeting, we discussed the progress of the design. The design is progressing, and this land acquisition process is happening. Design is progressing as planned. That's the information we got so far.
Happy just to receive something simple like that, just so that I can relay that back to the community when they come and ask me. And just for clarification, the acquisition is on Brisbane's side and not on our side. That's correct, isn't it? Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. So councillor Bradley will be forwarded that information each time there is a meeting, so that she feels like she's in on the discussions, which is important. No one else has any business with the manager? Thank you very much, Mr Ranawira. Appreciate your time today. So we'll move on to item 5.1, Capital Roadworks and Drainage Programme. Can the Road Infrastructure Delivery Manager, Mr Simon Malouf, please enter the discussions? Before we open these discussions, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none. I now refer to Mr Malouf. You may, hang on, give us a sec. We're just chasing the visuals to match the audio.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At the end of the third quarter of the year, the delivery of the council's capital programme for roads and water, roads and drainage infrastructure has continued. It's a little bit behind where we had anticipated it to be in original planning. A number of factors have fed into that. We have had a number of ongoing issues with land acquisitions taking an extended period of time with the state government. There's also been some, new issues emerge with Enerjex and their lack of response to some of the services that they've been historically providing for temporary support of power poles during works, and we still are unable to secure those services at the moment. There's emerging issues in the pre-cast supply of pipes, which is starting to impact a little bit on the commencement of some of our projects. And it's also been a fairly wet close to that quarter. The programme for this year was always going to be quite tail-heavy with a lot of increase in construction happening from March period, from the March month. And some of those delay factors have just slowed the, I guess, the uptake of new projects hitting the ground. It's only been affected by the order of a month to two months in a lot of cases, but that has meant that our programmed expenditure is down a little bit. At the end of the quarter, $34 million against planned expenditure, which I think was up around in the 40s. Just in the month of April, we've further, there has been a notable increase in the rate of expenditure, and end of month, April, we closed at $43 million expended. And we are expecting that to climb quite significantly now. There's some, almost $54 million worth of projects that are commencing in the fourth quarter to bolster that monthly expenditure, which will, over the next couple of months, be climbing to in excess of $10 million a month and staying there for a while. Another good aspect of what's happened in the last quarter, we have realised some good savings on projects, which has also meant that the expenditure is slightly affected there. The Woodlands Drive Master Drainage Project, that had a very good letting gain of almost $2.2 million savings, and the Logan Lee Healthy Street Project that we're delivering for the Economic Sustainability and Development Branch, almost $2 million savings on the expected construction costs for that project. Also, I neglected to put it on the slides, but also within our pavement rehabilitation programmes, we've had strong savings throughout the year, meaning that there's also been several million dollars of savings realised in the delivery of asphalt and spray seal services that have actually required the bringing forward of additional scoping to complete the expenditure. So whilst we have had some interruption and not quite the rapid uptake commencing at the end of the third quarter, certainly had a very strong quarter with a lot of procurement happening, essentially six months of procurement being condensed into a three-month period, setting us up for a good close to the year and a very strong start for the next financial year. To date, most of the expenditure has been in the rehabilitation programmes. That is going to change dramatically over the next couple of months with a very significant number of capital projects starting up. And the split is, as between the business units and delivering, has been as expected with RCM largely on track with their delivery targets for the year. And, but with the contract procurement, those projects have been typically where the slight delay in commencing projects has occurred. Across the city, in the rehabilitation programmes, there's been 16 bus stop upgrades, 56 locations where we've undertaken footpath rehabilitation, curb rehabilitation and pavement rehabilitation at eight and four locations collectively. The pavement rehabilitation has been a bit slow through the middle of the year. There's recently been an additional two contract packages awarded, and they are both underway. Thank you, Madam Chair. And those projects, those contracts for the pavement rehabilitation, we'll see a large number of streets visited in the remaining quarter of the year. Current projects that are underway, the pavement rehabilitation project, sorry, programme, had some notable key projects completed, Red Cedar Crescent and Flagstone, Silverwood Drive and Red Ash Court. And as I've mentioned, there's the two large asphalt resurfacing contracts and a spray seal contract that are commencing in the final quarter of the year to bring that programme home. I've seen the completion of the Doug White Drive, stage one project, which ran well throughout, finished largely on time and on budget. Now we just await the finalisation of the land swaps for road reserves that will enable the finalisation of that project and continuation through to Cantona Street connection. Webroad Upgrade, RCM has been progressing well on that project, with completion expected in the month of May. And also, nice to see progressing the South Street package of local road upgrades that... The South Street package of local road upgrades being undertaken by RCM is commencing with service relocation works there. There's quite extensive services to be relocated there, several million dollars, and that will be occurring over the coming months. And the construction by RCM to commence following the completion of those corridor clearing Compton Road Cycle Way commenced in the third quarter. Great to see that one up and running after some extended period in getting the grant contributions agreed with TMR. That is a notable cycleway project, $3.2 million, some very complicated bridge and boardwalk solutions there that were really the only way to go. And it just took a little bit of time to get that one onto construction, but great, and then that is progressing well Homeview Road, curb and stormwater upgrade in Beanley, a smaller project, but due for completion this month or early in June, which is good to see. As far as the projects that are scheduled to commence in the coming quarter, or the current quarter now, the Moko Road and Logan Reserve Road intersection upgrade at Waterford West, that has now commenced. So it's great to see those improvements being made at that We've commenced major rehabilitation of the pipelines that go underneath the Brownsville Plains Shopping Centre. Lot of planning went into this project, challenging working environments, all confined space entry, and difficult working conditions, lot of controls to put in place to ensure officers are safe in the event of, you know, unexpected rainfall, where those pipes fill up very quickly. So there's been a lot of effort to make sure that those works are undertaken safely and in a very organised way, but it's great to see those works undertaking. Almost $4 million to upgrade those pipes, making sure that we give them a very good renewal on their condition, because it's not really a pipe network that we want to be going into anytime again soon. So pleasing to see that one underway. Tees Bridge Replacement Project, works have commenced on site, and those will be continuing through into the new financial year. The Defiance Road Master Drainage Project, also now underway, that has experienced some issues with some unexpected service clashes, which we're working through at the moment. But for the moment, works have been able to be carried on and hoping to resolve those before there are any major impacts to the project. Also, at Grand Plaza Drive, there was some minor pedestrian improvements that have been completed there. Those works... Those works commenced in April and they are now complete. Really interesting project that's about to kick off, the Woodlands Drive Master Drainage Project, which there'll be a further report on following this presentation. This project, quite a complicated project to deliver, very large pipes in a small street, highly urbanised area. Essentially will involve the entire excavation of the roadway to lay these pipes. And just in the, the contract has been awarded and we're looking to mobilise that project either late this month or early in June. A couple of risks have emerged, the Enerjex pole, temporary pole support issue that I mentioned earlier, that has the potential to affect this project. We've got round about eleven weeks of work that we can safely undertake while we try and resolve the issues with Enerjex and the provision of their service. Just mention that those issues are being experienced industry-wide and we're still awaiting Enerjex's satisfactory response as to why those services have been withdrawn. The Scott Lane Culvert Replacement Project, that contract is now awarded and we are preparing to mobilise the contractor in a similar way to the pressure that's being felt on the precast pipe industry. The precast bridge units are also experiencing a lot of higher-than-normal workload at the moment and they're starting to push timeframes out for the manufacture of bridge components. This one, we are working through an alternative at the moment and hoping to get that one resolved and not affect the delivery of the project. The Logan Lee Road Healthy Street Project, as mentioned, for the EDNS, too many, that will be hopefully kicking off before the end of the financial year. So that's, and that's going to be a challenging job to undertake those amendments to the road area under such a highly trafficked road, but pleasing to see good savings in the construction costs of that project and that it is kicking underway, getting underway. The Fryer Street Local Road Upgrade, that project has now commenced. Stockley Road Upgrade, that contract is awarded and trying to prepare for mobilisation to the site for the contractor. Schmidt Road Eagleby, again, contract is awarded and looking to commence construction before the end of this month. The Dickman Road, Curb and Stormwater Upgrade in Forestdale, that contract has now been awarded as well with construction expected to be commencing on site in June. Future projects. Very pleased to say that the Chambers Flat Road project, that was originally slated largely to be delivered in this financial year, but was unable to be progressed due to an extended period of land acquisition by processing by the state government, that has now been gazetted and we are, will be awarding today the contract for clearing. We have engaged the service providers, Enerjex, Telstra and NBM to come through after the clearing works. Sorry, the clearing works will be hopefully commencing in early July. Once some clearing has been done for about a month, we will be able to bring those service providers through to clear the corridor of public utility plant services over the following several months. It's likely to start construction in earnest just prior to Christmas. So that one has been a long time coming and it's great to see that that one is finally able to be delivered for council. Hoping to, in the next quarterly update for the finalisation of this financial year, bring back information in relation to, again, the financial outcomes for that project in construction procurement. That should be some very strong savings on that project based on the planning estimates that were originally prepared for that project. So that is another good news story. We are currently out for procurement for the Gilmore Road Upgrade in Beranbar. That will be upgrading the width of that road and formalisation of footpath areas. That one, the, has, land acquisitions have progressed well on that project and we have been able to initiate the slightly earlier delivery of that project now. Also hoping to start before the end of the calendar year, the Alberton Station Road Intersection Upgrade. That one will be a nice one to get done. It's certainly a complicated arrangement in its existing format and the finalisation of improved traffic arrangements at the bottom of that off-ramp to the Kingston Road will be definitely well received. Browns Plains Road and Scubby Creek Intersection is also due to commence late in the calendar year with land and surface issues now being resolved to allow the progress of that project. Kelly Street Master Drainage Project, again, another very significant piece of drainage infrastructure upgrade for the city, due to commence hopefully later in the calendar year. Again, there are some risks with pipe supply for that project, but we are working to mitigate those by council procuring the pipes well in advance to ensure that they are available for the contractors to use by the time we get to construction. At the moment, industry is at sort of twenty to twenty-six weeks lead time for those precast pipe items, so it's making a lot more coordination work on council's side, but we, at the moment, there should be solutions to give us reasonable security over forward delivery of our programme. Woodbeck Street Master Drainage Project, also due to commence late in the financial year. Station Road Cycleway, again, the same update as the last quarterly update, we're still awaiting TMR's accept final approval for the project. So that we can move that one into procurement. Tully Bridge Replacement also due to start before the end of the calendar year. Won't go through everything in this slide, but the, I guess, the main content on this slide is to show the extensive amount of work that is currently in project development and detailed design to secure our forward delivery programme for future years. Lot of work in the priority development area programme and the priority infrastructure area programmes, with some very large projects progressing there. Difficult to move through the planning phase and the detailed design and a lot of properties to acquisitions associated with those projects, which we need to progress. But there's a lot of work currently open in that area to prepare us for a strong delivery in the future years.
Thank you very much. I feel like I need to talk for a minute so you can have a drink and get your breath back. That was a pretty substantial report. Just for the people listening at home, if there is anyone, just know that every time you curse traffic going slow because of road crews, that's your rate dollars at work and it's good that it's all across the city. Questions? We have councillor Bradley.
Through the chair. Mr Maloof, I want to sincerely thank the people under you who came and briefed me about the Woodlands Drive Master Drainage Project. It's quite significant, obviously eighteen million dollars' worth, but there is something that you didn't say, I was hoping you would say, but you didn't. So can you just elaborate on the significance of this? Obviously, there's a picture of a man in a big drain. There's something first, I believe. Is that correct?
In relation to the size of the pipes and, yeah, certainly, it's not everyday infrastructure that we're placing on this project. The, in my time with council, which is now eighteen years, certainly the largest pipes that we've placed in that time. And, yeah, look, it's a very exciting project. Everyone's really pleased to be associated with it. It's not straightforward construction, difficult site constraints, and, yeah, it's going to be for the engineers, they're really looking forward to getting involved with it.
Understanding it's the largest in Queensland or maybe even Australia?
I try not to get into size comparisons, so, yeah.
No response to that one, is there councillor Bradley?
It's a great infrastructure for council to be providing for the community.
Never ask about it. Can I just say, I know it will be welcomed because there are people in that catchment who've had water going through their properties and houses and so this will definitely be well received. I know it's difficult with, you know, coordinating it all and I believe the staff have really project managed this really well, so that's what I'm impressed about.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor, I'll pass on your feedback to the team and thank you for the comments.
Councillor Walcox.
Thank you very much. Mr Maloof, just wanted to double check with the Scott Lane Culvert Replacement Project with the bridge. Do we know the height of the recent flooding that went through there that cut the road off?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't have that information at hand, I haven't checked that myself, so I'm not quite sure.
I'm just curious and I'm hoping that the new bridge height would cover the flooding that we just had, because that was a minor flood that went through there and cut the road. So just curious as to the height, and I know we've talked about this before, but whether or not the new bridge height that's going in there will cope with the flooding that we've just had, considering that was a minor flood.
Through you, Madam Chair. The, if I recall correctly, that bridge is being, the new bridge will be around about three and a half metres higher than the existing road through that area. Now, that has afforded a flood of immunity of about a one percent, oh, sorry, a ten percent AEP, which is basically a one-in-ten-year flood, should be able to be accommodated. That's on the regional flood, so whether Logan River is backing up and causing flooding. In the local event, I believe we've got Q100 immunity, so, or one-in-one-hundred-year immunity for the local catchment storm event, which is the more dangerous event where more rapid flooding, very high flow rates. So, yes, it certainly is going to provide a notable improvement over what is there at the moment, which I believe is probably only around about a one-in-one-year exceedance probability.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing further, councillor Walcox? Councillor Avon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Throughout the presentation, Mr Maloof, there was a number of projects that you said contract had just been assigned. How many of those are local contractors?
From my recollection of our construction panels that were procured several years ago, in most of the projects, in the size of projects that we're delivering, there weren't successful local contractors who are actually established in the city on those panels. So we, again, procure our construction panels through open market procurement and give opportunity to everybody to submit and meet the selection criteria or the assessment criteria that were established for council's needs for the delivery of road and drainage infrastructure. But, yeah, from my recollection, I don't believe that from those projects that have awarded, that there are contractors there who are based within the city.
And the contracts for the preferred tender lists, do they compel those contractors to use local staff or local subcontractors in any way?
They, through you, Madam Chair, in the procurement of those contracting arrangements, there was certainly content in relation to the local supplier content. At that time, council's position did not, was a little bit different to what has developed in recent years, so we are in the process of trying to get a process that sits within the framework that will achieve those outcomes, but that is still under development.
Thank you. And when do we go back to reassess the preferred tender list? When does that go back to open market?
Through the chair. I believe that is probably likely to be around three years away, so that was a three-year initial term with the options for it to extend by three one-year periods based on satisfactory performance and outcomes.
Great. Just a lot of money to be spending on people who don't, either hire local or buy local, so it'd be good to get that fixed as soon as possible.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councillor Walcox.
Sorry, just forgot to ask, has the Scott Lane Culvert Replacement Project, has that been awarded yet?
Through the chair, yes, that contract has been awarded and we are just working with the contractor to resolve the issues of delays in supply of the bridge componentry for the precasting.
So it should commence mid-2021 sometime?
We had originally hoped to have that project underway in June. We may, it is still up for resolution exactly which way we will go with the alternative supply for the bridge componentry. One of the challenges with that project is that the, because the creek crossing underneath that bridge is on a high skew angle, the bridge is also skewed in its abutments, which requires non-standard bridge deck units. And that is, at the moment, when industry is very tight for supply, there's reduced interest in anything that doesn't, isn't a standard item. So, but we're working through it, we're hopeful we'll have a solution and be able to advise you in the coming weeks as to what the commencement will be for that project.
It will be a welcome addition to Div 11, to getting residents out when it floods, provided it doesn't still flood and it's good. Thank you.
No other questions from any other councillors? Oh, councillor Hall.
Through the chair. Under the future major projects in design and your major roads projects, have any of those projects been gazetted?
Through the chair. Most of those projects are either in the stage around twenty-five to fifty percent complete in the detailed design, so we have got a major campaign currently underway for actually initiating the land acquisitions. Certainly the Edelston Road Upgrade, I believe the acquisition of properties is underway there. The remaining projects, yeah, over the next several weeks, they will be substantially on the Crowson Lane project, the potentially Logan Lee Road and Third Avenue projects in there, those will be initiated to bring those. So, yeah, we're at the stage now where a lot of that is coming to lodgment.
Thank you.
No other questions? I've just got a quick one. The footpath rehabilitation, so we have a situation at the moment where our seniors and people with mobility, certain mobility needs are coming up with vehicles that aren't the norm, they're not the four-wheel little scooter that we're used to, in fact, they're three-wheeled trikes and they're getting quite substantial in size. What, if anything, are we doing to rehabilitate some of the footpaths, particularly along the major high-traffic areas, to ensure that when they're turning on a footpath, on a ninety-degree footpath, that they're not tipping over, that they're not having difficulties? I know that we raised one in the past where a gentleman with no legs actually came off his scooter because he went down, and it was a tricycle-style scooter, that sounds ridiculous to say, but it was a tricycle scooter, and he lost control of his vehicle and actually ditched it, not once but twice in our community, so...
Madam Chair, that is probably, it's a great point to raise, it's something that probably does need to be well considered in the future rehabilitation programmes and retrofit programmes. I don't believe there's currently in place anything that specifically brings that into the assessment, but I think it's, I'm happy to take that back and discuss with the other roads group managers on how to manage that issue moving forward.
If you wouldn't mind, I think as communities emerge, that will certainly be... If you wouldn't mind, I think as communities emerge, that will certainly be the standard that we need to potentially look at so that they can just get around the community safely in those scooters. No one else has any further questions? Okay, can I have a move for the report? Councillor Bradley, second to councillor Stemp, all those in favour, please raise your hands. It's carried unanimously, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr Maloof, for your, for your input this morning. That marks the end of the road infrastructure delivery managers' reports. Do you have any general business for us, Mr Maloof? Does anyone have any general business for Mr Maloof? There being none, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item six point one. It's a report for Lady Arty Circuit, Logan Village. And if I can call on the road construction and maintenance manager, Mr Stephen Bell, to enter the discussions. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none, I now refer to Mr Bell, please proceed. Sorry, just, just to interrupt you. No conflict, just a question, okay. Sorry, Mr Bell, please proceed.
Good afternoon, madam chair, and good afternoon councillors. In February two thousand and twenty, our city was impacted by a fairly significant weather event. And that caused widespread damage across the city. One of those areas that was impacted was a, a road called Lady Arty Circuit at Logan Village. The weather event at that time basically caused the drainage system to fail. So the drainage outlet, the bio retention basin and the downstream channel all suffered significant damage as a result of the wet weather. There are actually photos contained in the report which actually highlight that damage. Following the weather event, RCM undertook significant investigations and commenced negotiations with the Queensland Reconstruction Authority because there's an opportunity for council to attract funding for the repairs to drainage systems and roads throughout the city. Unfortunately, at this time, I can't comment on whether that, those discussions have been successful for Lady Arty because they're still ongoing at the moment. But what is clear is that the drainage system at the time, following the engagement of a consultant to have a look at the drainage system as to why it actually failed, there were a number of design flaws in the drainage system that need to be rectified. The reason for this report is to seek funding from the National Disaster Reserve that we have because we're looking at approximately seven hundred thousand dollars plus of funding to restore this drainage system back to its previous condition. One of the conditions of the Queensland Reconstruction Authority funding criteria is that it's, it's replacing like with like. However, in this particular case, if we were to replace like with like, the drainage system is likely to suffer the same failure, which is what it, which was what resulted in February two thousand and twenty. So the reason for undertaking the review by a consultant was to look at what was the cause of the failure and then to look at what we could do to ensure that those failures were not prevalent in any works that we entertain going forward. So this report seeks funding from the NDRA reserve to reinstate that drainage system and to obviously undertake the necessary improvements to that system. So I commend a report for council's consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Bannon, you ready for leave with the local councillor for the area? Councillor Karansky? By the way, all right. Okay, I'll, I'll just thought that. Councillor Bannon, you had your hand up first, that's fine, if you share the border of it.
Thank you through the chair, to, to Mr Stephen Bell. I fully support what you want to do and I think it's, we have to get it fixed pretty soon. Obviously, I was the one that discovered it originally. The only issue that I've got is it was designed and approved by the, by the developers. And I, I can see a heap of flaws in that one, also the one just up from a hundred metres up. How do we stop, how do we change the engineering so we don't have all these, because the one up, the one a hundred metres up, you can see the same thing similarly starting to happen there. So it's like stage one of a disaster and this is the completed disaster. And we didn't do it, I get that, and we, we would have done it a lot better than that. But is there some way we can look at, is that something we do through DA? Or we change the way these guys have designed these things? Because it was definitely designed the wrong way.
Through you madam chair, it's not my objective to criticize my counterparts in DA, I wouldn't do that. Suffice to say that I have had discussions or am having discussions with DA in regards to these types of situations, more particularly about the approval of designs and obviously the superintendence during construction. Because clearly, this is only a relatively new piece of infrastructure, which failed during the first test. So clearly, it's advantageous not to go down that road again in the future, if it can be avoided. So those discussions are being had with DA to make sure that we can put in place some mechanisms so that these sort of things don't occur again.
Thank you, sounds like you're all over it.
No further questions councillor Bannon, councillor Karansky.
Thank you councillor Bannon, and I do appreciate that you've been really on the front foot with this. But I also had the same kinds of concerns that you've already raised. The design flaw in the drainage system, when this was actually only completed in two thousand and nineteen, am I right? So council actually doesn't have any recourse against the actual developer who put in the infrastructure?
Through you madam chair, once the drainage structure has been constructed and it's been handed over to council, then basically we take over the maintenance of that. So given that it was handed over in two thousand and nineteen, it's now ours. So we don't have any recourse. But more broadly, we need to look at our processes and the way that we actually go about approving designs and then doing that superintendence of the construction. I think we've lost this particular case in terms of developer, but certainly we can put in place measures to stop this thing happening again.
So there's not a, like, on maintenance period or anything like that, like we have with other infrastructure in the city?
Through you madam chair, there is, but that on maintenance period has obviously ended, and that ended in two thousand and nineteen.
It rained when it was tested, that's all right, I know the answer to that one. How much will the Logan rate payer potentially be funding to correct this?
Through you madam chair, if we're not successful with the QRA funding, because the funding is on a basis of seventy five percent QRA and twenty five percent council. So if council has to fund a hundred percent of it, we're looking at potentially seven hundred thousand dollars plus.
Very disappointing, of course, but it needs to be done, so, yeah, good luck with the funding.
Councillor Walcox.
Thank you. Couple of questions, is it stormwater runoff or is it runoff from Logan River catchment area? Where's the water running off from?
Through you madam chair, the drainage system has been built to accommodate the drainage needs of the development. So all the runoff that occurs within that development goes down through a series of pits and pipes. And then obviously gets to this outlet, which is in a reserve. So it's from the subdivision, not from the river.
And where does it, where is it meant to flow to?
I understand you correctly, the drainage, or the water that gets to this particular system, its outlet is to the creek, can't remember the creek's name, but hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, so it comes out of the development and then it's potentially meant to flow into a creek. So question, with photograph like three and four, the scour of the drainage channel, did it look like that beforehand or is this where it's meant to flow? Or is this from the water that's gone through because too much water has come through?
Through you madam chair, I can't comment on the state of the open drain before the drainage, before the stormwater event. But what I can comment on is that the event which occurred in February two thousand and twenty, from memory, the Albert and Logan rivers, the event was around about a one in ten, one in five, one in ten year event. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not a more high intensity storm event which may have occurred in this particular area. But you would anticipate that these types of structures would be able to accommodate those sorts of events. Because we get them quite, I won't say quite frequently, but we had another one in March this year. So you would hope that these systems can accommodate that.
But essentially, these scours, is that the drainage channel where the water's meant to flow? Is that what essentially it is?
Through you madam chair, correct. So the water comes out of the drainage pipe, it then flows into a bio retention basin, which is fundamentally a retention basin, which allows water to infiltrate into the ground, to take out all of the nasties in the water. And the water flows out of that, also over a weir, and then into this drainage channel. So the drainage channel is the outlet to the creek, but it's all part of the drainage system.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'm just curious, I'd probably like to take this offline with you to talk about it differently, thanks.
Thank you very much, and my apologies, deputy mayor councillor Raven.
Thank you madam chair. Mr Bell, what, how much money, in, in continuing my theme through the budget, how much money is in the NDRA reserve and where does that funding come from?
Through you madam chair, in the financial area of this report, it's one point nine five three million.
Yep, and where does that funding?
Where does the funding come from? So my understanding is that when an event occurs, we spend the money. And then when we get the funding back from the QRA, that goes into the reserve.
And we can only use it in response to disasters? No? So what are the, what other purposes can we use this reserve for?
That's a very good question, I would.
The acting CEO wants to help you with that one.
Acting CEO.
Thank you madam chair. The NDA, NDR reserve was set up to help council fund these sorts of unexpected damages from disasters where we didn't actually have another funding source or we didn't have to go back to council for a budget amendment. So generally, what would happen is that, as the manager said, if the event happens in a year and we have to get in and fix it quickly, we will fix it using our normal operational expense. And at the end of the year, if we, if it's over or under, it gets washed out in the end of year results. In this case.
Pun intended.
Well, we've got a, we've got an opportunity to come back to council and ask for a budget amendment, but the obvious source of funding through the budget amendment is from this reserve. So we haven't commenced the job, this is what we're recommending to you. If you didn't use this funding, you would have to use our existing overall budget for the year, and this would stay there. Now, as you can see, one point nine five million in a total reserve for unexpected damage is not a lot. It's highly likely that the damage we had in Boxer Avenue will fall into this category as well for this year. And we'll be back shortly, I'm sure, once we have the overall cost for that, to, to look at funding that one.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from councillors? Thanks very much, can I have a move for the report please? Councillor Bannon, second to councillor Karansky. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. The next report is item six point two, Featherstone Road Chambers Flat. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have any conflicts to declare? Councillor Bannon, you have a conflict.
I do madam chair, I, councillor Bannon, declare a declarable conflict of interest in relation to item six point two of the City Infrastructure Committee, meeting on the eighteenth to the fifth, two thousand and twenty one. The particulars of my declaration are as follows. The declarable conflict of interest arise because of interests where a reasonable person might think I, as a councillor, could be biased at the details of which are as follows. The name Bruce Hankinson. The nature of my relationship with Bruce is he's a close personal friend for forty plus years. He's a consultant to the company that is inside the report. And there's a reasonable person might think that I have a bias because I've been friends with him for forty plus years. So I also select an option, I propose to voluntarily exclude myself from the meeting while the matter has been voted on and debated.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bannon has declared a conflict of interest and has chosen to leave the meeting. Thank you very much councillor Bannon, if you'd like to depart the room, that would be great. We'll undertake discussions and call you back in once the vote, the matter has been voted on. Okay, Mr Bell, can you proceed please?
Thank you madam chair. As highlighted in this report, we have a piece of road infrastructure at Featherstone Road, which is in very poor condition. It's a very flat section of road, it has very poor subgrades. So the, the area below the road pavement, it's actually saturated, and the pavement itself is, is very poor. So we're seeking to undertake some road rehabilitation this year. Approximately six months ago, I was contacted by a, a consortium called Quantum Ground Stabilisation with the option to, or the ability to trial their innovative ground stabilization process or system. Following those discussions, they were quite protracted, obviously, we needed to understand the nature of what that product, what that system did, what accreditations that they have through the Australian Road Research Board, which is basically the, the, the board that approves all new products, which, where, which is where we go to for confirming that contractors or suppliers have been approved, or their product's been approved for use on, on those sorts of projects. We, after those deliberations, we agreed in principle that their product could be used on this particular project. There are some benefits of this project, of this product to Featherstone Road, given the wet subgrades. Unfortunately, this particular company doesn't yet have the required approvals through ARB. There's a process called TYPES, which is a three step process. They've gone through step one and two, but they haven't yet received step three. Now, in order to achieve accreditation at step three, they need a real life construction or maintenance project to achieve that. By council allowing or partnering with this particular consortium, this company, it will allow them to go through the process of TYPES accreditation. So in order to allow us to work with Quantum, because they are a sole supplier, we need council to agree to that because obviously the legislation says that council must go to tender or quotation. And in this particular case, we don't want to go to tender or quotation because we want to partner with Quantum. So this report is seeking council's support to allow Quantum to be a sole supplier for the purpose of using them on the Featherstone Road project. I commend a report to you councillor.
Thanks very much. Mr Bell, just a couple of questions from me, this is a local business.
Through you madam chair, the consortium comprises three parties. One of the parties lives locally, the other two are outside of the area from memory. But they are a, they are for all intents and purposes, they would qualify as a local contractor given that one of the parties lives locally.
And is, given that councillor Bannon has done a conflict of interest and left the building, the actual process by which you allocate or consider this company is completely removed from councillors throughout the whole stage, isn't it?
Through you madam chair, as soon as we started negotiations with this particular contractor, they were informed that they were not to have any discussions with councillor Bannon because it was obviously in his division. We also had discussions with councillor Bannon to advise him that we were having these discussions with QGS and that it would be in his interest not to have any discussions. So, yes, these discussions have been held in good faith amongst the officers with no councillors involved today.
So councillor Bannon's COY essentially is just in case someone out there in, in the public has a perception that there could be something, we've just put that to bed.
Through you madam chair, as highlighted by councillor Bannon, he's obviously friends with one of the owners of the company. So clearly, he's declared an interest in that particular interest.
Thanks very much. Councillor Ravan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How does the price of this method compare to the standard method?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's very difficult to say at this particular point in time, because we haven't used this product before. As highlighted in the report, we have negotiated for Quantum to supply all the materials, to go and source the stabiliser. So to do all those things that they need to do in order to test their product, so we will build it, but we are under their authority. At a guess, we're probably looking around the $100,000 mark. That would be a guess at it, because at this particular point, we haven't used the product before, we're not used to that product. So it would be very hard to give you a dollar figure, but if I had to guess something, it would be around that, about the $100,000 mark.
So once you, so the unknown is because you haven't used the product before, and, but once you understood the methodology and how to use it, it'd come down in price anyway, you'd better at using the product essentially.
Through you, Madam Chair. The price of the QGS product has never been discussed, so we don't know what that costs a barrel, or, so we don't know that. As stated, we haven't used the product before, so we don't know how easy it is to actually use the product for stabilising purposes. And I guess when we use it, we'll get to find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Stemp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bell, I had similar questions about the cost comparison, but I guess I'm just curious. You mentioned, obviously, it hasn't been endorsed in Australia, but has something similar been done overseas? Or is there a similar product, similar system been done elsewhere that's been quite successful?
Through you, Madam Chair. Throughout the course of the negotiations, the QGS indicated that they had used this particular product overseas, particularly in South America and I'm not sure where else, but it has been used successfully before. They have used it on a project over here, but it's not, it wasn't a construction project. I think it was just an access to a waste transfer station or something like that. So, but in terms of this particular product, this will be the first time this product has been used anywhere in Australia on a real construction project.
Thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Just a little bit concerned about using road as a guinea pig for a product. So it's more, it's more that we're testing the product, not the provider in this case. Is, are we, are we actually going ahead with this to trial the product for future use?
Through you, Madam Chair. To answer your first question, we use all sorts of different techniques, and there's a risk with any one of those that we use. So there's no difference here, really. This is about trialling their product, because you don't know if you never use it. So this may well be a great product for council to use on its construction and maintenance project. It may well be a very cost-effective way of actually treading roads in our city, which have very poor subgrades. So in my opinion, it's a risk worth taking. The road that we're looking at undertaking this work on is low-traffic volume. It doesn't service a lot of properties, and we believe it's, the product is a suitable use for this particular road.
Thank you, that was answered very well.
Thanks very much. I think you did mention that it has been used in a waste transfer station, which I imagine takes a lot of vehicles per day versus a backstreet, which doesn't.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm certain it was a waste transfer station. It was certainly for Brisbane City Council. I just can't remember whether it was a waste transfer station or whether it was a quarry, but it was something to that effect. And from what I understand, the QGS had said that it had been quite successful.
Excellent. Councillor Bradley, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I appreciate that you've brought this forward, Mr. Bell, and I'm very supportive of utilizing new products. I suppose the research background in me is saying you need to have some sort of matrix for reporting all this, so that it comes back to us. And in the recommendation, it doesn't refer to anything coming back to us. I would like to see if it gets up, if there's a third clause there that refers to a report coming back highlighting the outcomes of this product, whether it's a benefit to our council, whether it would save the council money, those sort of checks and balances.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to bring a report back to council. If it, if it serves any benefit to council, the product has to go through a fairly extensive testing assessment regime through the Australian Road Research Board. They actually have professionals across Australia that will actually assess this product. The contractor has to do ball logs, has to analyse the material, has to come up with mixed designs, has to have it thoroughly tested, and we will only use it once that's been confirmed as being a suitable product by the Australian Road Research Board. And they will also be present when we're actually using this product on site, so they can actually get a feel for its application. So, but to answer your question, I'm more than happy to bring a report back to council.
Councillor Ravan.
Madam Chair, if I could ask councillor Bradley if she'd be comfortable with it just to come back to a briefing, because it'll probably come back sooner after the event. Community reports can take three months after something's happened.
Turn your camera, turn your mic on.
Thank you. My preference to be transparent to right payers of our city, that it comes back as a report.
So there'll be a draft amendment to the motion coming up on the screen. So items one and two remain as is. Item three, that the road construction maintenance manager be requested to repair a report, prepare a report to a future city infrastructure committee detailing the outcomes of the trial. Councillor Bradley, does that, that does suit you? So we have an amended motion up on the board. Councillor Bradley, you happy to move that amended motion? Do we have a second of the amended motion? Councillor Keransky, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Okay, so that's carried with the exception of councillors Hall and Ravan, and you are?
Against.
That's councillor Ravan. Councillor Hall?
Against.
Thank you very much. So that marks the end of the road construction and maintenance managers' report. Mr. Bell, do you have any general business for us?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, not unless councillors have any questions of mine.
Thank you for the promotion. Thank you very much for the promotion. I'm very happy with that. Does it come with a wage rise? Okay, does any councillor have, councillor Bradley, you have some general business for Mr. Bell?
Yeah, thank you. If I could just please pass on my sincere thanks to yourself and Director Mr. Riley for coming along and seeing an issue in my area that wasn't, has taken a while to resolve, but hopefully, fingers crossed, it's resolved now, so thank you.
Is there any other business for Mr. Bell? Thank you very much for your time today. All right, so we're moving right along. This is great. We're almost at one o'clock. Good job. Item 7.1 is a report on Logan Water Capital Works Programme third quarter. I now refer to item 7.1. Can the manager of Water Infrastructure Solutions, Mr. Mark Vaughan, please enter the discussions? Before we open discussions, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? And welcome back councillor Bannon. There being none. Mr. Vaughan, can you please proceed with your report?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Okay. Okay, so here's where we're standing at the end of March. We're slightly ahead of our adopted budget. One of the things, though, I do need to be transparent about is that in the new works in the wastewater area, we've got a artificial sort of bump in that capital work spend there through the purchase of the landfill or Chambers Flat Site B treatment plant. That was actually forecast to land in this quarter coming, so it's landed earlier. So that's put us ahead of where we would be. Without that artificial bump, we're probably about, around about a million dollars behind on the budget. So relatively good shape, heading towards our amended budget by the end of the year. So just highlighting some projects that we've got out about in the moment. So we have, we're installing a lot of new flow meters in the network. You can see the areas for all of these flow meters are our growth suburbs. So as the, as the water network is increasing and the demand is increasing out in these suburbs, we're trying to get more metering in, so we've got better control of our water network. So those meters are going in place to give us that control. As far as water renewals go, many of you get the works notices from our team showing that we're doing lots of, lots of work upgrading our older junctions in particular in the water areas. We've got a lot of corroded, internally corroded fittings, and we're going through a series of replacements to get rid of those. So that is ongoing. Our flagship project at the moment is our bio-solids gasification project. So you would have seen, or had the opportunity to see, the demonstration facility. We're now well underway with the clearing for the actual main facility. The orders are placed, the supply is happening for all of that main gear, with it landing in the middle of the year. And the hope is that we will have that up and running by the end of calendar year 2020, and commissioning, sorry, 2021, and commissioning it in, early in next year. Wastewater renewals in Eagleby at the Riv Hills Road pump station. There's a significant renewal of that pump station that's going quite well. Hopefully, we'll have that finished by September, but it's ongoing at the moment. Likewise, out at Logan Village, we have a pump station replacement there at Logan Village. It has been impacted a lot by wet weather, that actual site. It's been flooded a couple of times. We're still tracking towards a June finish, but it's tighter on schedule now than it was because of those flooding events. This one for Logan Water is fantastic, that this is off the books. This has been in the planning stage for a very long time. So we've now, now had this one. It was always depended on the developer coming along and being requiring it. We've had this on the books for a number of years. It's finally up and going. There's one last developer connection to finish that project. Another project we're very interested in, this is the solar array out at Logan Home. You can sort of start to see the scale of that solar array. It's about, if you've got a view to the one that was at the Cedar Grove wastewater treatment plant, it's about eight times bigger than that. So that will be done by the middle of the year, and we'll have that online. It was originally part of the arrangement we had with Arena around the gasification project, but it'll be producing energy prior to that, so we'll be able to use that to offset the other energy usage at the wastewater treatment plant. Wastewater renewal projects, we've got a lot of renewal projects going on, various pump stations all around the city. We're now trying to target some of our poorer-performing pump stations, ones where we've had record repeat maintenance issues. So getting into those will be a good thing for us and for our maintenance crews to ease that load. So there's a lot of work to go there. And we have an annual program where we're looking at improving our wastewater treatment plants. What you can actually see there is a diffuser rack being lifted into the reactor at the Jimboomba treatment plant. So Jimboomba is one of our smaller plants, but you can see that the work on the renewals on that is ongoing as well. Yep, this is my last slide on this report. Again, you guys would often see notifications coming in that we're actually doing wastewater relining. Here's one of the crews. You can see the wastewater reliner goes in like that. Then there's a curing process where steam's used to cure that in place to set it off. So that's, yeah, so we're well underway, focusing on Spans Road catchment coming up. So that's where we're at, is Logan Water and the capital program.
Thank you very much for that report. I'll now open the floor for councillors for discussion. Do any councillors have any questions? Councillor Wilcox.
Thank you. A couple of questions. On page 72, or page three of your report, you've got Elderberry Drive, Jimboomba. Just for those people playing along at home, it's, they don't class it as Jimboomba, and I know technically it is. It's flagstone for them. But just wondering, you've got two pictures there. You've got Elderberry Drive, and then you've got Pub Lane. I'm assuming both of those photos are exactly the same place, and I'm assuming it's probably Elderberry Drive?
I'm sorry, councillor, I don't exactly, the report in front of me.
Yeah. Because one says Pub Lane and one says Elderberry Drive, but I'm pretty sure they're both the same.
Pretty sure. It's not going to impact the works?
No, I know, but I'm also just...
Do you really care?
I'm also just curious, I know.
Yeah. Yeah, no, yeah, we've labelled that wrong, sorry.
Okay, cool. Just wondering if you can take it offline with me, because I'm just curious to know where some of these are, especially with that Pub Lane, the number of Pub Lane, and that sort of thing. So, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to get those. There's, I think there's nine sites, so I can give you all the exact addresses.
Awesome, thank you.
Councillor Stemp, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I just simply wanted to say, I'm really excited about this whole solar array at the treatment plant, and the fact that it'll, you know, it'll be an energy-neutral solution to the bio-solids produced. I think that's amazing.
No, thank you. No, it was a good project.
Thanks very much. There should be a motion up on the board, if there's no further questions. Happy to move it. Councillor Bradley's moving it, seconda. Councillor Stemp, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Carried unanimously, thank you very much. Item 7.2, Ridgestown South project. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Do we want to assume that the report has been read and move forward to questions, or? Great. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Vaughan? There being none, may I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Bradley, a seconda. Councillor Bannon, all those in favour, please raise your hand.
Excellent report, Mr. Vaughan.
That was carried unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Deputy Mayor, turn your microphone off, please. The chair has the call. That marks the end of the manager of Water Infrastructure Solutions report. Do you have any general business for us, Mr. Vaughan? Do we have any general business for Mr. Vaughan? Thank you very much. I note that due to social distancing restrictions, not all managers or staff could attend today. That being said, does anyone have any general business for the acting director of Road and Water Infrastructure? Councillor Bannon.
Thank you, through the chair. And if the chair can give me a little bit of freedom, just that I've got one question for the...
Not a chair.
With the recent things that have been going on with the announcement we made about some upgrades to Kenny Road, Chambers Flat Road, Kirk Road, that area, could you just, I've probably got three or four questions for you. Just with the community consultation, obviously, when I spoke to people, they said they didn't get much feedback, which obviously I went to a meeting, which you know about, on Friday night at five o'clock, to about, you know, those 50, 60 people turned up. A lot of them were quite angry about it. They, they're under perception that the committee consultation is finished. That's the, that's the, what they, the way they have read the document that they got sent in their letterbox. So could you please just evaluate on, is the consultation finished and where we go from from here for that?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, that's a planning piece that we're working on at the moment for Kenny Road. And I believe that the correspondents that we set out had a request for individuals to come back to us within a specified period. Certainly, from our aspect, if there are residents who would still like to make some input in regards to that project, we'd be still happy to accept that through to council. Certainly, it's a fairly significant project for us over a long period of time, so there's certainly the opportunity for us to still take that on board as part of that process. I would advocate that they do it in the shorter term, not in six months' time, but yeah, certainly we'd be open to that, yeah.
So would the building put some comments out, either just myself and the local papers putting it, to let people know, please get in contact and have your say on this very important issue?
I'm certainly happy for you to put that out through your social media, if you wish to do that. We will have further opportunity for people to be involved in that. We will engage with people at the various stages through there, so we really are at that early planning stage at the moment. There'll be further stages for us in regards to project development and detailed design and construction before we're done. We're very early stages on this, so... detailed design and construction before we're done. We're very early stages on this. So yeah, I'm keen to do that. Probably not envisaging sending out the correspondence again to the same people we sent it to just recently, but we'd be certainly happy to to receive further feedback.
Also, the most of residents got one option. So and obviously, as soon as you mentioned resuming property in your home and losing your property, it obviously makes a lot of angst in the community, which I'm dead against taking people's property, as you know. Is can we be clear that there is there is more than one option at this stage, that this the the pre-plan that went out isn't a locked in confirmed project? That this isn't definitely going to happen at this stage. It's not funded, it's not agreed upon, that there is, there could be another option or basically the residents, what I don't like to hear, and I'm guessing, I don't like to speak on behalf of other councillors, but I will at this stage, nothing upsets the councillor more than when people say to us, we love the fact that you're fighting for us, but at the end of the day, the council officers do whatever they want. Can we be clear that that's not the case?
Certainly through you, madam chair. So at this stage, we're in that planning space. So we're still looking at the corridor. We're looking at where that would go. We haven't locked down a corridor at this point in time. Certainly, there's an existing road corridor there, which would be obviously one of the options that we would be looking at in regards to that. But as with all of those projects, when we start looking at that in more detail, we'd then start looking at where properties sit, where those sorts of things that we might need to protect are. We would also be looking at the contour of the land and the like. So to say that the the corridor is locked, no, we would, we're still currently looking at the corridor. Yep.
And again, through you, madam chair, and with no disrespect to the visual councillor and no disrespect to Yarra-Bilba at all, I have a lot of friends that live there, but like this is a Yarra-Bilba highway, and I think that the residents of Chambers Flat feel a lot of pain. I'm a fan of the treatment plant, and it's only because I've seen how well the one at Cedar Grove has turned out. They haven't seen that, a lot of them. So at this stage, the way they look at it in their eyes, they've been there for a long time, a lot of people 40, 50, 60 years. All of a sudden, they've got a treatment plant getting put in their backyard, and they see that coming, which they don't access yet. That's for Yarra-Bilba and Park Ridge and some of the stuff as a result of an SEQ regional plan. And then all of a sudden, this traffic corridors can put towards them, which obviously is for the traffic for Yarra-Bilba, let's be clear on that. It's where a lot of the traffic, I know you've got that look on your face, but a lot of this traffic is coming from the PDA. Is there any way, is I'm guessing, just looking at the job descriptions on who we push for TMR? Because I think a lot of the angst there is that Waterford Tambourine Road, once you hit Logan Village, it's back to two lanes and it's chaos. How do we advocate for the state maybe to, or the TMR to pick up that ball and run and put four lanes along Waterford Tambourine Road? Which should take most of the volume of traffic. That's what it should be designed for.
Through you, madam chair. So certainly Yarra-Bilba is one of the developments in that overall area, which would be generating traffic, which would be on Chambers Flat Road. But it's not the only development that's occurring throughout that area. There's certainly other development works which are occurring. There's even development which is occurring beyond our boundaries further to the south. Now, all of that is putting pressure on our road network. And certainly, we can see that in the traffic volumes that we're starting to see through that corridor. Certainly, Waterford Tambourine Road is an alternative corridor which has potential to accommodate some of that traffic volume as well. And we look in conjunction with TMR to do a one network corridor planning. So certainly in terms of our planning work, we're working towards that component, but also having expectations upon TMR to be looking at their network to try and do that as well. Certainly, in terms of advocacy, that is something that we would certainly support the council elect to do with their state members and the likes, to actually make sure that it's on their agenda. There has been more recent comms from TMR suggesting that a couple of those sections are potentially on their agenda for consideration, but I've not seen anything that talks about actually specified funding for those at this point in time. But we will continue to work with TMR and we would certainly be be looking for that one network solution. We're not looking to suggest that all of the traffic which is generated on the network would be carried solely on council's network. TMR's network is the higher order network.
Thank you through the, madam, through chair. So to summarise, community consultation is open and is and is wanted, so the community need to get their feedback to the department. The road network that isn't locked in, that that land of assumptions, nothing is locked in at this stage?
No, it's not locked at this stage. We're certainly still looking at that now. What will come ultimately down the track is we will need to find the ultimate solution or the optimum solution is probably a better better term for that, taking into consideration all matters. But certainly, that's the reason why we would like input to make sure that we consider all matters relevant in making that decision.
Thank you. Thank you for the freedom.
Thanks. Councillor Karansky.
Just a quick comment. I know everybody is tired. I just wanted to say I have great sympathy for councillor Bannon and the residents that he represents. A number of them come to Logan Village for social activities and have expressed to me also their angst about the road ahead and literally and metaphorically speaking. And of course, they're quite anxious about what might this look like. So I do appreciate that there is still some latitude to continue with ongoing conversations about the actual final network. I did want to just pick up the point that councillor Bannon raised about the Waterford Tambourine Road. As we know, this council actually has this on their advocacy program for state government. We're coming to a challenge now where we've done upgrades to what we call Albert Street, which is in fact the road that runs right through Logan Village at the moment, which has caused great community angst. I'm sure you've all seen various emails and so on. We recognise that we have a big population that we have to move, and this is trunk infrastructure. It was always a concern of mine that council's intent to upgrade Chambers Flat Road would in fact lessen the urgency for the Waterford Tambourine Road from TMR. So I certainly hope that we will maintain that pressure on TMR. We know that we've got bridge upgrades at Uar Creek and so on, which are, you know, big money spends for the state government. But I do sympathise with the council. I sympathise with the residents and I'm certainly supportive to assist wherever I can. But I also recognise Yarra-Bilba community is putting quite a bit of pressure on the road network. The state need to do their bit.
Thanks. I've got a couple of questions. You've, we've been talking about this for some time. What is the latest date you will accept submissions from the community? And is it from the immediate community or is it from anyone who wants to put a submission in?
Thank you, madam chair. Certainly from our perspective, councils are an open and transparent organisation. If somebody wants to write to us, we would take that feedback from anybody who has an opinion in that regard. We certainly don't exclude people from, I guess, being able to to provide us comments in regards to our projects. I would like to encourage people that they do it within the next couple of weeks, if that was possible. Obviously, we have resources which are allocated to the project. The sooner we can get that that information, the the more we can actually ensure that it's actually looked at and considered in the process.
Thanks for that. The second thing is, is I'm sure in 1964, when the residents of Euring Road Woodridge bought their homes, they didn't expect 19,000 vehicles a day. Growth happens and and vehicle numbers do happen as a result of other suburbs coming in. One of the, one of the things I noticed in the article was it suggested that there could be an alternate route to go through that area. I'm just wondering whether or not you can elaborate on that that comment in the local paper, and is that proposition suitable? And if so, how much would it cost?
Through you, madam chair. That's probably a bit premature for us at this point in time. We're aware that there have been some suggestions which have been made in regards to other alternative solutions. We, as I've said, are still in that planning space. We're looking at that type of information. We certainly don't have that to hand at this point.
No worries. So when those comments come up and it raises the hopes of people, it's not always the ultimate outcome, but you are investigating.
Yeah, and that is certainly the case. I don't want to give a, an indication in regards to that. From that point of view, I'm not looking to to divert or suggest other outcomes, but certainly we would look at at all of those outcomes before we make a final decision in regards to what would be the the most optimum solution in in that regard.
Thanks. Councillor Raven.
Thank you, madam chair. How many residents did you consult with initially? Mr. Director.
Through you, madam chair. I'm sorry, I would need to take that on notice. I don't have that information to hand.
No drawings, thank you.
Thanks very much. I just took a bite of my biscuit, hoping that you would have a really long set of questions.
I could muffle that question on a bit longer.
I'm getting thinner by the second, honestly. Okay, so if no one has any other questions for the acting director, we're going to close this meeting down at 1:10 PM. That completes our agenda for today, and I thank you for your participation.